I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular Board of Education meeting for the Oshkosh area school district for Wednesday, September 26th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes and yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Eliason?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Horsog?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we are privileged to have four students from Oaklawn Elementary School who will lead us in the pledge. They are Maddie Krevilian, Gabriela Pereira de Silva, Keyston Fighter, and Callie Schleicher. So if you four would come forward, we'll start the pledge.
(audience clapping)
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 We are also privileged tonight to have some musical entertainment by way of the Oaklawn students. So in the-
We're happy that we have a packed house for performance. I know everyone's paying to hear this song. This is the Oaklawn school song that the students of the fifth grade of the building before we opened the new Oaklawn Elementary School left as a legacy. So the families and the students helped to write the song with Stuart Scott and Tom Pease, and so we're excited to share this performance for you.
So that would be about 2013, maybe?
Seven. Yep.
Something like that. Thank you very much for joining us. Okay, anytime you're ready.
(audience clapping) 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 (audience clapping)
A big thanks to our students and to Mrs. Herman and Mr. Joe Hankneck for making this possible tonight. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. With that, we will go on to Board and Administrative Reports, starting with the Board President We annually complete a survey through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, in which we are a member, and this is a little bit earlier in the year, but given that we are in transition with a new superintendent and we will be setting goals, it seems like this is an appropriate, is an appropriate time to do this. So you should each have in your folder tonight this form, and you just need to dial in, or not dial in, but to log in to the survey access number. You each have your own individual number, so please do this soon, like by the next board meeting? Can we get this done by the next board meeting?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Could've done tomorrow.
That would even be better. We should probably give a prize to the first board member who gets theirs turned in.
Let me get my phone on, I'll start right now.
Whatever works, Mr. Evans. I like your enthusiasm. Very good. All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome, everybody. We're very happy to have you here with us, and I'm very pleased to highlight and showcase some of the wonderful things that are happening across our district with our students, with our teachers, and with all the adults that support our teachers and our students as well. So I want to start off first with Ashley Casey. Congratulations to Oshkosh West Senior Ashley Casey. Ashlyn was recently named a semifinalist in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. This is a very prestigious recognition, and it represents less than 1% of high school seniors across the entire United States. Again, congratulations. Over at Shapiro STEM Academy, they're learning all about outdoors. A Girl Scout troop from Shapiro STEM Academy recently helped to bring the school's outdoor learning area back to life. Students, along with adult learners, leaders, excuse me, cleaned and painted the outdoor seating area, added a beautiful new little library, and prepared the ground for new landscaping. We want to give a special thank you to these future leaders for giving back and making a difference in their school community. Doesn't start there. Over at Merrill Elementary School, students at Merrill Elementary were recently recognizing for showing the Merrill Way in September. Merrill staff nominate students each month, recognizing them for being safe, kind, responsible, and respectful. Communities One students from Oshkosh North High School are currently working on a project called "Oshkosh Then and Now." To kick this project off, the class participated in a scavenger hunt around downtown Oshkosh to gain knowledge about different historic locations. The students will be sharing their learning during a gallery walk-style event at the newly renovated Howard on Washington Avenue. The gallery walk will take place on October 16th at 8:30 a.m., and public is invited to attend. Each group will speak "Then and Now" on the historic building that they chose to research. A number of classes at Carl Trager Elementary School recently participated in International DOT Day, which is based off of a book from Peter Reynolds titled "The DOT." International DOT Day is a global celebration of creativity, courage, and collaboration. One student activity included connecting with classrooms and other students around the world. Our own students were able to introduce themselves to students in Argentina, China, and California, and share how they will leave their mark. Back to Oshkosh West High School, students in the Empower Academy at Oshkosh West High School began the school year by building cardboard arcade games and hosting a game night. Proceeds from the event were donated to the Children's Hospital Fox Valley. Students were able to raise nearly $300 for a wonderful cause. Students and staff at Washington Elementary's were recently surprised with brand-new recess equipment. The generous gift was donated by the Wyman and the Malhoe families, in honor and recognition of Mike Malhoe. The fifth annual Webster Stanley Middle School Golf Outing recently took place, and this year, the event was able to raise just over $3,000. All of the proceeds will go to support the school's athletics, clubs, and positive behavior celebrations. Thank you to all of those who made this event and fundraiser possible. South Park Middle School. Staff and volunteers at South Park Middle School recently filled the school's walls and hallways with positive messages to students. The school partnered with Image 360 to create and install signs with positive messages and words of encouragement throughout the school. The signs are a constant reminder for students, helping them understand that the South Park community truly cares about them and supports them. Oshkosh North, congratulations to the most influential teachers, as selected by the 2018 Oshkosh North senior football players. These teachers have truly impacted these young men in a positive manner, and were recently honored for the wisdom, dedication, and commitment that they have shown to the seniors and to all the students that they taught throughout the years. Congratulations to each of these individuals, and thank you to these outstanding teachers. Carl Trager Middle School. Students at Carl Trager Middle School recently took part in some friendly competitions and team-building activities. The celebrations provided a wonderful opportunity for students and staff to get to know one another during the first few days of schools forming meaningful relationships. Each year, the Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation sponsors a complimentary breakfast social for all district retirees. The social provides a great opportunity for our retirees to reconnect with one another and stay connected to the district. It was so wonderful to see and welcome back nearly 100 retirees during this event. Our retirees have made an incredible impact in our schools and continue to do so. We're so grateful for their continued involvement and support. Before the school year started, all of our elementary school teachers spent some time reflecting on why do they teach. Throughout the year, we'll be spotlighting a few of our teachers and sharing their inspirational reflections. The individuals on the screens remind us of how powerful an impact our teachers are able to have in the lives of every single one of our students and our families. We are so grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers. And lastly, as you all know, the superintendent, I'm committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh. On the screen, you'll just see a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past two weeks. Thank you very much. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. Moving on, we have a district administrator supplemental report. I know that was submitted as a written report, but my understanding was that Mrs. Piran wished to say a few words about that. This is the agreement for the WIT Whatever It Takes program, and also for Project Search. Mrs. Piran?
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
You're welcome.
Dr. Cartwright, in Board of Education. Just wanted to highlight that the students that are at the WIT program, we save about $10,000 a year by having them in the district. We also save the time of transportation when we were transporting to a C-6 school. The, I shouldn't say gentlemen at that school, all the students at that school are doing quite well. And just let you know that the Project Search site is at Ascension Mercy Medical Center. That is for transition students who are 18 or older. And this is the first year that we allowed tuition agreements. We had 18 applicants from Oshkosh, and we only had 10 of our own that met criteria, one who declined, so we opened it up to the nearest districts, both Amro and Winnicott. And that has really helped offset the expense, so that wonderful transition program that we have for students with intellectual disabilities is actually costing us less money than it costs to educate at the high school. So we're really happy for the partnership with Goodwill, Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, and the partners there. Goodwill is who does the job training there, so. Any questions?
Just thank you for the fine work in serving the needs of our, of all of our students.
I appreciate the support of Stan, having let me kind of run with both of these, and the board in the support, not only from facilities and finance, but really the support for both programs. I'm very grateful. Thank you all.
Thank you. We also have a report on the board listening session, which takes place before our first meeting of every month, and I believe Dr. Gunlock has that report this evening.
Yes, the board has a listening session, as all of you know, but just for people who may not be aware, the board at the first meeting of each month from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. has a listening session here at the central office. We talk about a variety of issues, and the reason the listening session was put in place some time ago was because it allowed for a nice two-way discussion on items that aren't always possible in the regular board meeting. We had several people there, mainly staff members, both current and retired staff members who are at the listening session. They did a wonderful job. We had a very civil and respectful conversation. They had well-stated concerns, and they expressed a great deal of empathy for the difficult decisions that you as board members need to make. So that was, that was really nice to see, I have to say. In summarizing their concerns that were stated, they were concerned about the health insurance change, the logistics of the change, plan design questions, and how will information be provided to staff. There were several people who had that sort of summarized concern. Another group talked about the difficulty of the change and how personal that was for staff members. Each one has their own personal health need situations, and just the fact that it's a deeply personal decision for staff members. Probably the most concerns that were repeated were about the narrow plan and can it handle the influx of all the OASD employees? Can the network service all of our staff needs? And the concern over turnover within the healthcare profession in, for whichever provider is selected. So that was, that was expressed numerous times. They did ask if the district would commit to a long-term situation that staff could depend on. In other words, are we going to be changing this every few years, or is this more of a longer-term commitment? So that was a concern that was expressed. Staff also expressed a concern over lack of options, and is there a way for us to provide choices to staff members? There was also a concern expressed by several on the religious nature of some of the providers, and would that potentially limit options for staff in terms of their medical needs? There was also a concern expressed by several over us losing staff to other districts who might compensate higher. They expressed the support for having good benefits, as they do here in Oshkosh, and they felt if we lost those and we weren't paying higher than everyone else, we might lose staff. The last concern that was brought together was how the savings would be used, and what would the board do with any savings that might potentially be used? So that's a summary of the concerns that were expressed by staff members, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock. Are there any questions on the report? All right, very good. Thank you. Are there any committee reports this evening?
I believe you are, Mr. Evans. Okay. The Energy Committee met just this past Monday, and that's a committee that meets about four times a year, so I didn't talk four times.
Perfect.
Most people think it can be a good idea. First thing we talked about was the Energy Club updates. West has an Energy Club that has not met yet this year, because it's a brand-new school year, but one of their goals is going to be trying to expand Energy Clubs into other schools, and talking about how they can get the energy savings message out. We had the facilities update, which we just talked about what they had done over the summer with, when they put in new ventilation fans and stuff. It's also an energy-saving energy fan, so that falls under the Energy Committee too, so we got an update on that. When this Energy Committee started, it started with a group of people from every school getting together and talking about how they can save money to reduce energy consumption. And it was not even a board committee at that time. That came later, but it's been 10 years that it's been doing. And at the time, we had, some of our schools would rate an eight on the energy scale, which to get rated as energy efficient, it'd be 75. So we were way low. It was reported that all but two schools are now at 75 or higher, and the two schools that aren't are at 73 and 72, so a lot of improvement over the last 10 years. We talked about reeducating energy conservation in buildings, or how to set up your room properly so it's cooling and heating at its most efficient. And somebody said, string cheese on a thermostat is not the way to keep the room warm. So that is not the proper way. We're talking about having a personal appliance audit, because, you know, every little coffee maker, or little refrigerator, or fan that's in the buildings is using energy. So you want to know how many are there, and what type they are, and if there's some sort of more energy-efficient coffee maker on the market or something, maybe changing over to that. Last thing we talked about is e-cycling, because we have a lot of older electronic items that need to be recycled, and we're just talking about how to do that in the most efficient way. Our next meeting is in January 28th at 8:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, and I believe we do have another report.
Facility and Finance Committee met on September 17th here at the central office. Sue Schnor reported on the final budget variance for 2017. There was an increase in open enrollment revenue, which was offset by the reduction in the revenue by the federal government. There was also a budget surplus in the Medicare funding. The district had changed to a different third-party provider, and has noticed an increase in the Medicaid revenues. Sue also noted that some of the expenditure variance is a budget carryover, so Kelly Handy is calculating what the total budget carryover will be, and that will be reported to the committee in November. Then we also had a report from Jim Fox. He reported for the 2018 summer projects that maintenance worked on all summer. The district is in the second year of the latest Act 32 Energy Savings Project, which Jim just kind of alluded to some of the stuff that they did. The focus was on Carl Trager and West High Mechanicals and Windows, Oakwood's roof and Webster's AHUs. Remaining projects include the West Common Area Glass and Doors, which should be completed by the fall of next year. Hardscape projects included the new Oaklawn parking lot with the green space, the Oakwood ADA ramp, the rebuild of Franklin Playground, the asphalt there, the Washington Parking Lot, and the North High East Parking Lot and light poles. Roofing projects included two roof sections with skylight replacement at the maintenance building, and the roof section replacements at Emmeline Cook. There was a brief discussion on the curb appeal maintenance. I had asked about this, just how the summer went with all what we had done last year, which was a year ago this week. Yeah. I'm glad we didn't have to do it again this year.
It would've been nice having this weather now.
Last year, yeah. I've done them shirts. Yeah. A summer helper was hired, whose specific function was to take care of the project curb maintenance. Jim had talked about that before we brought curb up, that he wanted somebody to go in and start do that maintenance work. He managed to get through every site at least once this summer. Plantings still look great, with very little was lost over the winter. All replacements were sourced through Roanur Nursery. So with our expert people that went to curb and planted all that stuff, there weren't a lot of experts with green thumbs. We didn't lose a lot, and we did go to Roan, Jim did, and he got replacements for all this stuff. They came through again, so thank you to Roan again. This was one of the most productive summers the maintenance team has had. And then we also had a follow-up on a north project previously introduced by Julie Dumke. She wanted washers and dryers in an area for some children in need there, and the solution was to utilize the two swim lockers, and to keep their washer and dryer and the changing table where they currently are located. All the infrastructure was in place, and it was just a matter of rethinking the space. Then we didn't have to redo, you know, we were going to, remember, we were going to do all that, like looking at it and redoing it and gutting that room. We don't have to anymore, she found some other space that the school worked with. And then there was a question regarding the status of the Merrill property and how that was going. The house was demolished last fall, which included an asbestos abatement. There is no storm sewer on Kentucky Avenue there, so IRS was contracted with the summer to begin engineering. The winter will be spent in meetings with the city. They're looking at, because they're going to redo one of those roads, does anybody remember which road it was? On the other side of Merrill, and they're going to start redoing that road. So they were looking at where the city is going to put the drainage for that road, and if we could link into that one. If not, we'd have to go all the way down Kentucky. And so they kind of want to wait till the city decides what they're going to do, is my understanding. Is it central? Okay. So that's it. We adjourn the meeting, and our next meeting is scheduled for November fifteenth here at eight-thirty.
Thank you, Mrs. Olmstead. Are there any other committee reports? If not, then we will move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. There were signup sheets out there. I don't know if someone could bring those in while Mr. Keschel is kind enough to do that. I'll share the guidelines for public comment. Any individual who would like to address the board for a non-agenda or agenda-related item may do so by signing up at the door by the boardroom entrance. The board president will call you forward to speak at the appropriate time. Once called, you will need to state clearly your name and address and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group you represent. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage in debate with the board. Staff are available to meet with you after you speak, should you have questions, and board members are always happy to meet with you after the meeting, should you wish to discuss your issues of concern with them. Three minutes have been allotted for each speaker. Please limit your comments to the allotted three minutes. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at four-two-four-zero-one-six-zero to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Due to the number of people present, and the board wanting to provide opportunities for all points to be heard within a reasonable time period, if there is a group present who will be expressing the same point, we ask that a representative present the information on behalf of the group, and that the individual state whom they are representing. Also, if you are not present with a group of people, and a point has already been made, it is requested that you highlight your point quickly, to allow all speakers an opportunity to present within a reasonable time period. So we have one person right now who has signed up for the non-agenda-related public forum. If there are others, we will also add them to the list. But the first person on the list is Alicia Herman. So I'd invite you up front, Alicia, and state your name and address, please, and share your thoughts.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alicia Herman. I live at five-zero-one Congress Avenue, and I am speaking on behalf of the Oshkosh Education Association tonight. I have some notes, so I'm going to look at those. Looking forward, the Oshkosh Education Association wants to continue our partnership with the Oshkosh Area School Board, and focus our energy on the question, and it's a rhetorical question, I'm not asking right now, how are we going to maintain and retain quality educators and staff when we continue to have cuts in budgets, and they tend to be on the backs of our employees? And staff morale is shaken right now. They're anxious about the unknown. Retaining quality teachers and staff was a top priority, reported by Oshkosh for Education. The community spoke out, and they told us that they wanted us to maintain quality educators. And how can we do that when current employees only received one-point-two-six percent CPI when the state recommendation was two-point-one-three? They're continually sacrificing with budgets. A big concern that came up, that creating new positions could possibly be, you know, halted, you know, when we can't maintain the positions that we have without making sacrifices. And it raises concerns for our employees, where the future holds. And so I urge the board and the Oshkosh Education Association, as well as all of our staff members and employees, to work together and come up with a solution on how we are going to keep the amazing teachers and staff in this situation. We have some concerns, but I know that we can work together to make a difference. So thank you for listening. Have good night.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who wanted to address the board on a non-agenda-related item, and perhaps missed the signup sheet? Anyone at all? Okay. And moving on, we have three individuals who have signed up for the agenda-related public forum. These would be for any item that is currently on tonight's agenda, starting with James Warren. There he is.
James Warren, twelve-eighty-five Wheatfield Way. And as co-president of the Oshkosh Education Association, I will be speaking for them, for us. And of course, this is on the issue of our health insurance. Oshkosh Education Association, of course, we've seen many important nights, many important votes with the school board, and from referendums to budget cuts, and we feel like tonight is no different. Tonight is a very big night. After meeting with members over the past few weeks, there was one theme that came out of those meetings, that teachers want to keep their doctors. That's the number-one theme that came out of all of our meetings. One, after going through the options, we couldn't find any options where that would happen, except we did hear about the option with GHT offering some changes and some cuts. Of course, the OEA doesn't think everything on here is great, but at the same time, we have to go back to our theme, for us to be able to keep, for all of us to be able to keep our doctors. And after looking at all the options, the only option for that to happen would be to stay with GHT. We understand the GHT first came out with a thirteen percent, which put us over budget, and these cuts, as far as we were told, would bring it back to eight percent, which of course is what the district has budgeted. That is what we were told, and that's what we're understanding with this proposal here. So again, as you vote on this very important night, please keep in mind that the number-one thing that teachers and all employees have been expressing to us is that we want to keep our doctors. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Next, we will hear from Yukiko Grine.
Hello. My name is Yukiko Grine, and I live at eighteen-zero-four Menominee Drive, and I thank you very much for listening to me speak tonight. I will, I'm a little bit over three minutes, but I'm going to go fast. So in her inaugural convocation address, Dr. Cartwright emphasized that our district puts high on the priority list, that not only the health of our students and families, and their families, but also OASD staff and our families. If this is truly the case, then switching to a provider such as Network or a plan similar doesn't align with this position. It would be devastating to the health and wellness of my family and others. I'm going to highlight two main issues at hand for my family, given the prospect of the district still seriously considering Network as a possible carrier. Number one, not being able to see doctors and practitioners at Aurora would be the most detrimental for my family. All our doctors are Aurora doctors. Both of our children were born at Aurora. Our daughter has extreme anxiety about going to the doctor, and it took a long time to find a provider who she felt truly comfortable with, that pediatrician is at Aurora. Having to meet with and establish care with all new practitioners in the middle of the school year would be extremely stressful. The person who would be perhaps the most detrimentally affected with only having access to Ascension doctors, however, is our four-year-old son, Hiro Yoshi. He has acute asthma and allergies. There is no allergist on staff in Oshkosh or in Appleton at Ascension. There are ear, nose, and throat doctors, who also take and treat patients with allergies, but they are not allergists/immunologists. There's a huge difference between ENTs, who treat patients with allergies, and a certified allergist. In addition, the closest person, like I said, who treats patients with allergies is in Appleton, and having to go there would be an extreme, would be a stress on our family and an inconvenience. You know, my son needs immediate access to an allergist in terms of time and proximity to stay healthy, maintain updated treatment protocols, and get treatment when his symptoms are acute, which last about three months out of the year. Access to practitioners like allergists and immunologists should be available to people without having to go outside their network, or paying extra for a preferred provider option, especially if there's an option to do so here in Oshkosh. Secondly, I am personally concerned about the implications of not, of only giving employees to access to Catholic healthcare ministries, words quoted in Ascension's vision and mission statements. As a person who feels we should be able to receive care that is not driven or influenced by a religious institution, I strongly object to the idea of having to seek treatment and wellness healthcare at a Catholic or other religiously affiliated healthcare system when there is another major provider in our city. My partner and I are members of the LGBTQ community, and needed specific treatment and assistance to have children. At the time, I was trying to get pregnant. I sought treatment from a doctor at Affinity who was recommended to me because of his work with women and fertility. Going to an Affinity doctor for me was the last resort to hopefully prevent having to do IVF treatments. I ended up needing a fertility-related procedure, which was done at Affinity, and then had to go pay to a private women's healthcare clinic outside of Affinity in Aurora for further treatment. And this private clinic happened to be started by the Affinity doctor I was treated by, because he couldn't perform certain procedures at Affinity at the time, because their limitations set forth by their affiliation with the Catholic Church. Finally, although Ascension has more inclusive language in their nondiscrimination policy than Affinity did, I still object to having to seek treatment from only a Catholic healthcare ministry. While I realize there are many good practitioners at Ascension, there still lies the issue that there are a number of types of care or procedures denied to patients because of the alignment with the Catholic Church. Thank you so much for your consideration and for listening to my concerns tonight. Thank you.
[applause] Next, we will hear from Shelley Herneke.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. Are these working? Because I can't hear anything in the back of the room.
They're strictly for TV.
Oh! I'm like, straightening.
Dr. Herzog, Dr. Cartwright, and Oshkosh Board of Education, thank you very much for listening. My name is Michelle Herneke, and I reside at six-seven-seven-nine South Highway forty-five in the city of Oshkosh. I'm here to talk about my primary care physician. I went to him recently. I've been seeing him for fifteen years for a variety of issues. I also see an allergy specialist at Aurora. I asked him, I told him what the district was going through, and I asked him if he would be willing to give me a referral to someone at Ascension, Affinity, and he said, "To be honest, Shelley, their turnover is so great there, I don't know any of these people." I've been seeing this man for fifteen years. He's well-established in this community, and for him to tell me that the turnover rate at the healthcare services that we're looking at going to is so great is definitely not something that makes me feel secure. Winnicott, Oshkosh Truck, Winnebago County have all gone to Network, and they've all come back. So while I believe, I can understand saving some money, I kind of also think that there's a possibility that that's what's going to happen here. Winnebago County only lasted ten months with Network. So I feel like the upheaval that we would be having to go to this new healthcare system would probably, again, be happening in another year or two. And I don't think it's fair for you to do that to the great employees of this district. I just think I would like to see you choose fairly, so that we don't have to give up our doctors. I know that if I had to give up my primary care physician of fifteen years at Aurora, and then tried to go back to him in a year, I'm not going to get to see him. He already doesn't accept new patients. And he has no referral at our oncoming, at any of the oncoming health systems. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who missed the signup sheet out there, and who would still like to address the board? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board who somehow missed the signup sheet? I see some gentle nudges and
I did.
Not eye-rolling, but eye contact attempted to be made, though not successful in all cases. So I just wanted to make sure we didn't overlook somebody who really wanted to speak tonight. It is a big night. We all recognize that. All right, then seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda. Can you all hear me? Okay. Thank you. We will be adjourning to executive session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent E, and that would be health insurance bids.
So move.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye.
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Herzog, aye.
Aye.
Olmstead, aye.
Aye.
Carlin, aye.
Aye.
Alison, aye.
Aye.
Alison, aye. Mose, aye.
I know that there had been some questions about a closed session in tonight's meeting, and so I would like to read a statement to you from our legal counsel. Wisconsin statute one-twenty-point-one-twelve, parent twenty-four, parent A, authorizes the school district, that is, the school board, to solicit bids for health insurance benefits. Pursuant thereto, the district initiated a request for proposals for health insurance benefits. The district's request for proposals specifically stated, quote, "submission requirements. This is a sealed bid process. The proposal submitted to be considered," excuse me, "the proposal submitted will be considered the final offer. However, the district reserves the right to negotiate with the selected finalists," end of quote. With advice of legal counsel, the board will convene now to executive session to discuss the status of negotiations, which were addressed at last week's closed session. So we will be adjourning down the hall. You're all welcome to stay here. There may be some additional chairs in the back of the room. I know it's a long time to stand, so please feel free to use the chairs at the presentation table, or any in the back of the room, so that you are somewhat comfortable. I do not anticipate that this is going to be a long session, because the closed session is only to address the opportunity to share with us what was determined through the negotiating process. We will come back into open session. We have this as an agenda item to be voted on. It will very likely be pulled from the consent resolution, and there will be discussion of which you can all listen and be apprised at that time. All right, with that, we will adjourn to executive session.
The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM one-oh-one point nine. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
I'd like to reconvene the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting of September twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen. We have a consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote, without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda, and will be voted on separately. The board will consider approval of one. Minutes of August twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, oh, wait a second.
You can pass a bit while I'm pulling anything.
Yeah. Thank you. I was on the roll here, sorry. Pull anything. I'd like to pull nothing. All right. We'll also be pulling five B. Any others? [beep]. Personalized response, but please be assured that I read every single email that I received, responded to every phone call, even though I ended up playing phone tag with one individual. But that was extremely important in terms of knowing what you were thinking, what your experiences were, and going forward, what that might mean to you and your families. We do care about you as individuals. We do care about each child in this district. We want all children to be educated well, and all, this board means all. And we depend on you every day, and we know you give your best every day, to make sure that every child in this district feels valued and is educated to the best that they can be, at least to provide those opportunities, whether or not they take them in some cases, maybe not what we would like. But we do appreciate the efforts that each and every staff member puts forth every day to make a positive difference in the lives of our children. So don't ever lose sight of that. We do care about you. We also have to look at the bigger picture. Where do we stand as a district? We've been a low-spending district for many, many years. That has had an impact on many things throughout the system. Older buildings, we know that the average age of our buildings, as Dr. Mr. Mack used to say, was about eighty-four, which I think is safe to say is older than anyone in this room, bar none. We also know that we will be facing some facilities issues, we are facing facilities issues, which will continue into the future, in part because of the age of our buildings. Even our new buildings are roughly twenty to twenty-three years old. So there are a lot of challenges we face, but never lose sight of the fact that you are valued, and you are valuable to this board. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
I just want to give a moment for pause, if I may. We are working on some technical issues at this point in time for the broadcasting of this, and so I just wanted to at least bring that to attention. I do not believe it's being broadcasted right now.
That's not good. So our mics are not hot?
Do that whole talk all over again, bud?
I don't know. Did anybody record that?
So my, Dr. Gunlock is working on it right this second.
Thank you.
I would say we wait till they come back on to finish.
Phil, we know that our meeting is very public, because all of you are here. I think it's important that we also wait for that.
I got quite a few emails that people are going to be at home.
Watching. Right.
Anybody want to see a picture of my dog? On the screen?
Yeah.
Somebody want my dog?
You still haven't fallen in love with her?
Someone just texted me and said, and they're watching it.
Oh, so we just can't see?
Oh, so we just can't see.
Okay. All right, let's keep going.
Something really does.
The world can see us, but we can't see the world.
Oh, they can see you.
Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you.
Well, I don't mind not seeing myself, so I'm good.
Monitor shut down after a little while, but he's broadcasting.
Okay. All right, so we can keep going.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
Okay, thank you, Dr.
There we go.
Thank you.
Dr. Herzog.
Not only this evening, but the fact that this is rebroadcast is often meaningful to individuals. Dr. Cartwright?
I just want to point a clarification, just to make sure that everyone was, we're up and running, so that this is a very transparent process.
Very good. Thank you. The floor is open for conversation, board members.
I guess I'll go next. I also want to thank everybody that reached out. You know, obviously, it always helps us to be informed, and we can't possibly know what, what is it, eight-hundred and, or thirteen-hundred employees are thinking, so it does help us get a flavor for what everybody's thinking. The thing that struck me, and I think one of the things that we do have control over, is that we're at a hundred-and-twenty-three percent, our claims. is that we're at 123 percent, our claims are at 123 percent. So we're a very unattractive body to insure. And that's something that we do have control over. So, moving forward, you guys know the game, right? It's pick the insurance company, they'll give you the rates today, and then next year they're probably going to change them again, and then we'll be off and looking for another one. So what can we do to stem that? I know we have wellness programs, what else? You know, what other innovative and creative things can we do in-house? But I want you to know that I personally have heard you loud and clear that you want your doctors, I understand that, I too like my doctors. And so I did hear that, and, and I personally am leaning towards going that way. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, so thanks.
Okay, what else?
Oh, sure. Again, thank you, we, I'm one of those ones that got people at my door, so I've been running into lots of people, and calls, and emails, and, and again, if we didn't, I echo Dr. Hursaw that if I didn't get back to you, I'm so sorry, it was constant. And it, it was, I know that few people are talking for many, we re, we recognize that, and I appreciate that. For the hundreds of emails that I did get, I could have gotten over 1,000. So I know that you had your leaders and your presidents that spoke for your groups, and that they collectively asked your, you know, collectively told us your concerns. I want to really thank all the personal stories, because this is, this is an extremely, extremely personal, a personal situation for everybody, and this only, this doesn't just affect our school district, it just affects the community, it affects the hospitals, it affects employees, it affects everybody, you know, it's not just the school district, and I do realize that too. But I also want to talk a little bit more about what, what Allison had shared, is that this is, you know, if, if you're out in the private sector, the insurances do do this. We do need to look at, you know, maybe bidding it out more, and that we might have to move through this in, in a fashion that some of the public sectors are not used to, just so that we know, and kind of are really informed as a school district, that that are options and things that we do have to look at in the future. Making a huge change like this, giving more time and having more conversations in the future would be, I think, really healthy for our community, and for the school district. I also am leaning towards more of, feel more about giving the employees at this, you know, the option of what they want, and their own choices, for their own health insurance, right now, knowing the future of this, we can't sustain this forever, you know, that hopefully we can move in a direction and help with our healthcare benefits and costs. Because in real, reality, I know, and I'll say it, and I probably will be hurt for it, but I know we always have to save money, we have to find, because we don't know what the budget's coming, we have referendums that are coming to an end, we don't know what's going to happen with, with Madison, with, you know, with politics, and with who's voted in, and what they're going to do, we all know those things. So to save money, our benefits and our salaries are 80 percent of our budget. So obviously that's where some of our savings have to comes from, when it's 80 percent of our budgets. So I just want people to understand that too, that we get it, but when your budget is so heavy on 80 percent of your budget comes in, is one part of it, you really don't have a lot of leeway to take from other areas too. So, I hope that came off, if that didn't come off right, please call me, I'll explain it better. I hate watching myself on TV, so, yeah, so thank you.
Sure. First, I, I too want to start off with thanking all of you, and all of you that aren't here today, for expressing yourselves, either by phone, by email. I didn't get anyone that walked up to my door, but I would have welcomed it, so, so thank you for that. It shows a true gratitude to the work that you do, and to your families, how that you're willing to speak out for something that you feel is absolutely important to you, and the success of our district. So, thank you for that. I think the challenge, I think another way of putting the, kind of the challenge that we have, is that we can go ahead, and we believe that we can go ahead and do this maybe for one more year, but then the challenge is that we're going to be back at this again. And so Alicia, I want to, I want to point you out by name, because in your non-agenda comments, you talked about how we have to work together, you know, and, and we don't want to do this every year. You don't want to do this every year. So we need to, we need to figure out this process earlier, sooner, both, and to be more productive in communicating that, not only to us as a board, but to all of you. And so that, so that kind of pairs down to your families as well. So I, I think we're, I think we're comfortable in believing that we can extend this one more year, but we're going to be in a really hard spot in another year. So, so we have to work together earlier, and more productively, and change a message that we have going on, of being anxious about the changes, and being productive about where we can succeed in creating the best plans as possible for you and your family in the district, and continuing the great work that you guys do for our kids. Simple as that. And I, I think, I think this is not an easy decision for us, I think we're in a, I think we're in a lucky spot, right now, to be able to do this. But, but know that we appreciate it, that we're able to do it for you guys, and that we look forward to continually working with you, and shifting that message, so that the message is a lot different this time, to be more positive and more productive in the future. That's what we really need. All right, that's good. So, thank you.
Mr. Evans, or Mr. Alison, or Mrs. Carlin, we haven't heard from any of you yet.
Just briefly, I too thank everybody for emails, I did not respond to them, but I be rest assured, I read everyone, and I didn't respond, because I knew other people were, I didn't want you to be inundated with emails from, from everybody. Health, our, our health industry in this country, and it is messed up right now. And that is going to get worse unless something huge happens at the national level. When I finally got insurance, I was self, I'm self-employed, and I had bought it on my own until it got too expensive, and I dropped it for a long time. And then my wife and I decided to get married, so I got insurance. And I went through, I went to research the doctors, and I found one I liked, I saw her once, and she moved to New London. I hope it wasn't because of my, no. But my attitude now is, you know, I envy you people who have these long relationships with your doctors, because I'm going in there thinking, they're going to leave any time, you know, they're going to get a better offer somewhere else, and gone. So I envy you to have the longstanding relationship with your doctor. But other companies are switching, they're, every two to three years, they're, they're rebidding and re, and changing insurance, and that's the way the road looks like it's headed, if, if things don't change. Be prepared for, for this again.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, and I, I thank all the board members who have commented, but you get to really the heart of the issue, if I can, if I can say. I would also like to thank all our staff who emailed, it was so meaningful to read individual personal accounts of healthcare in the, you know, in the, in the room with the doc, right? It was really meaningful. And I will also apologize for not responding, but I'm thankful for your emails. I think of two things in this conversation. The wise economist, whose name escapes me, who said, "That which can't go on forever, won't." And American healthcare at 16.9 percent of GDP, when the OECD average is 9.8 percent, will not go on forever, right? So far, I'll let the historians write it, but are we in the beginning of the free-fall death spiral of American healthcare? We absolutely may be, I won't, I won't go there right now.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're noticed for that.
On a happy note. So, I think it's imperative that our staff, who, when I look around the room, and when I read the emails, whenever I go into a building, I think of people that I've thankfully gotten to know over my nine years in the board, and I see friends, and colleagues, and people I respect, and people I love, and people I tear up over, right? Lots, right? And I just, I am deeply thankful for you as persons, for you as educators. And so, does it skew the decision? How, we're human beings, right? How does that not affect your decision, right? It's not raw analysis of math, it's much more than that, right? So I'm thankful that, that our consensus, I shouldn't say our consensus, that our center of effort is on the side of doing what's best for our employees. So that's where we are. The, the challenge I have in this decision especially is, how does this conversation, and our vote, and our healthcare, and our premiums, and our coverage levels, fit in a broader context? Because I can't see it in isolation, or in silo. How does it compare to other workers in our region or state? How does it compare on the global scale? How does it compare to our students in our classrooms? As I said at one point, likely half of whom can't really go see a dentist in any meaningful way, if not for the free clinic, right? So how do we have these great disparities? Well, we have them because we're in America. That disparity is central to our national character, right? So, you, you, you know, as hard as this vote is, or this conversation is, or as sort of unsettling as this debate is, I'm thankful I'm not going to be here likely in six years to have to, because I think it'll be far worse, right? Unless we see a total collapse of the system. So, and I, and it sounds awfully doomsday, I don't mean to, but I, what, the endpoint for me is, I would like to, right on the heels of this, and I'm very thankful for Dr. Cartwright's clear direction to get on strategic planning right away, and I want to be, I wouldn't say we're not deliberate, but we find ourselves reacting to 13 percent rate increases, or negotiations that get us to eight, or to something else. And I'd like to be much more upfront on that, and saying, what matters? What's in the best interest of our students? If it's great healthcare coverage for our employees, then I'm for that, without question. If it's great salaries to the ability we can, I'm for that. I don't see a scenario where it's both, right? But whatever the mix is, whatever matters to our employees in getting the best teachers we can, to best serve our students, is absolutely what I support. And I feel like strategic planning, and having those conversations, what really matters, what really gets us to the end goal, is what we should do. And I don't, I feel this is more of a reactive, we are where we are, right? We all come to the board at various points, we come to the district from various other places, and we have what we have, and we work within that as best we can. But I'd like to be deliberate, and I very much look forward to ongoing dialogue with our staff, to do the best thing for our staff, for our community, for our students. Thank you for your time.
Well said, Steve. Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Carlin, did you want to add anything?
I would also like to thank everybody that reached out, and sent emails, and shared your very personal stories. I read every single email, and I think I replied to every single email, and I thank you all for reaching out, it does make a difference. We are in the people business, and we heard loud and clear what is important to you. However, I would like to echo the sentiment of my fellow board members, which is, this is not a sustainable environment for us, and we need to start having conversations on how we are going to pay for it next year. So we might be where we are again, next year. And I think we can do a better job of communicating what's going on, and what the plans are offering, because I do feel like there was a lot of miscommunication regarding the network health plan, and particularly how it applied to the LGBT community, and, and it's, it's not a Catholic plan, but that's beside the point. I do think that we could have done a better job communicating about some of the plans and some of the options, because I do think that some of these options that we were offered would end up giving you better coverage for less money, and it would have been a cost savings to some of the employees, and it would have required 60 percent of you, or 40 percent of you, to maybe switch doctors. But when we have the conversations going forward, I'd like us all to keep an open mind, that perhaps there might be something better out there. And I know we love our doctors, and I know we love the healthcare that we have, and I, we will continue to do that, because we value you, and we have heard that that is important to you, and so therefore it's important to us. So, when we start talking about this again next year, I, I think that we need to bring teachers in to the process a lot earlier, and I think we need to have greater discussions on, on what's important, and where we can have cost savings opportunities, and things like that, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Schur, do you have anything you'd like to add? You've been involved in this.
I'm just here to answer questions.
I want to say an enormous thank you to our executive team, that Sue, you've, I've got lots of emails that you are absolutely, answered everybody's questions, you met with so many people, so I want to give a huge thank you to you, because I, I know it's hard dealing with them, but it's, you guys wouldn't know, but we're hard to deal with sometimes, a little bit. So Sue's absolutely been great for us, too, answering all of our questions, and the associates that have helped with all of our nitpicking and asking, and I know, I've heard from different employees to staff that have said that you've answered all the questions, you met with them, you showed them, so a huge, and you're kind of just the, the talk, like, this is what we've got, so I can't, I'm so sorry that sometimes you feel like you're in the middle, I can't imagine that would feel that way, but you, thank you for communicating and helping us with the decision too, and Dr. Cartwright for her sound advice too.
Dr. Cartwright, thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Alison brought up a question about comparison with other national, local, state, whatever. I had occasion over the weekend to speak with a representative of a school district to the south of us, in Dane County, and I mentioned that, he asked me what was going on in Oshkosh, and I said, "Well, we're talking about budget, as all districts are, and we're talking about health insurance." And he said, "Well, I shouldn't even tell you what our rate increase is." And I said, "No, tell me." And he said, "For the coming year, it's a 1 percent reduction in what they have this current year. We had budgeted an 8 percent increase." Then he went on to say, "For years two, three, and four, they have locked in a 0 percent When we, that would suggest to me we have some room for growth, to reduce our costs. That is not to say that people should not be seeing doctors, who need to see doctors for physical and mental health issues, but if there are some ways we can reduce our costs, maybe greater use of the three-waves clinic, or those of us perhaps who could lose a few pounds, and bring our, I'm not speaking of anybody, and better control our cholesterol, that might be a good idea. They always say, "If you want to lose weight, get a dog and go walking."
Does that work, Steve?
Is that in the budget? Everybody gets a pre-puppy dog?
No, because then we'll get the vet bills.
But I, those, those are such serious health problems, the, the high cholesterol, the high blood pressure, the high diabetes issues, and speaking from a, a very personal standpoint myself, I know what it's like to be a caregiver to a brother and a mother who dealt with heart issues, and dealt with diabetes. And it's heartbreaking, especially when there are conditions that are hereditary, and they don't have total control over those. But those kinds of chronic illnesses, or even short-term ones that are critical in the moment, impact that individual, but they impact the family, and they ultimately impact the community. And so, working together, to borrow Alicia's term, I think is critical. This is a very difficult, it's, it's a difficult, complex, and challenging decision, because to me there are so many ripple effects. Years ago, there was a woman, I think her name was Watley, and she had a training video that John Springer's liked to use, and she would drop this pebble into a calm body of water, and see the ripple effects. And I see so many ripple effects from a decision like this, because the monies that we need to spend on health insurance mean we, we don't have those monies to spend somewhere else. We don't have unlimited resources. So as one of my colleagues said, "This is not sustainable to be at this 8 percent or 11 and a half percent rate." So, working together, we need to figure out, no matter what insurance company we choose, we can bring, bring down those costs, at the same time paying attention to the needs of our staff members and their families. So, to me, it's, it's, it's interrelated, in that if we, if we be in a position of needing to spend more money on health insurance, then we don't have those dollars to put into resources in the classrooms. And so it's, there's some real trade-offs. So, I, I do think, just to summarize... So, I, I do think, just to summarize this, to, um, we need to work together, and perhaps we need to look at a one-year proposal, with the idea that we would rebid this, or ask for RFPs at the, for the nineteen-twenty school year. Because the, I think the companies acted in good faith, and I appreciate their work, and the work of our healthcare consultants, sitting and standing in the back, but I would really like to see us reduce this one hundred and twenty-three percent, percent claim rate.
Right.
And, but more importantly, in some ways, make sure that we have people who are healthy, um, in our classrooms mentally and, and physically. It was about a year ago, I was shopping in one of our, um, local stores, and there was a, a music teacher, and her cart was filled with Depends, which is a great product, and I didn't know who she was buying that for, she was buying it for herself, because she said she doesn't have time to go to the bathroom. That should not be, that is not healthy. I hear from teachers who talk about how they relax over the summer, but they're uptight all year long.
Mm-hmm.
That's not right. I know it's challenging being in the classrooms today, the children of today are not the children of ten years ago, or twenty years ago, but, um, we need to figure out how to get this under control in this district, so. Anyone else?
I very much appreciate your, um, notion to, uh, review on the year, I know it goes against conventional and best practice, that we don't bid every year, but this might be an outlier occurrence, where, um, we talk about a one-year, um, provision.
And I'm not suggesting any company at this point, but we do need to fill in the blank if we're going to vote tonight, and so we would need, we would need a proposal from someone who would move that in a second, and then we would, we would need to, to, we would have an opportunity to, to discuss further and then vote.
I would move to put in our current provider, GHT, for, um, our, to carry them through the next year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we fill in the blank to read be it resolved with the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, approve the health insurance bid from GHT for twenty nineteen, would that be correct?
Yes, it's a calendar year proposal.
Okay. Has filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
I need a point of clarification, if I may?
Yes.
Um, only because there are two different options under DHT, um, there was one with a thirteen and a half percent increase, and then there was the one, um, for maintaining with our eight percent increase, but would result in a change of definition of preventative care.
I'll throw this up. I, yeah, I, with the second one, the eight percent, we listened to Mr. Warner, um...
Warren.
Warren, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's, I think I wrote it down wrong, too, I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, that, the main focus, we have to stay in budget, obviously, so the main focus is that they want their, um, they want their choices, and if that means giving up, which is some of the things that were highlighted on that, um, we have to stay within budget. I say the eight percent.
So you have to, I think you have to amend your original motion.
So I amend my original motion to say that we will go with GHT's second proposal of saving the eighteen, the eight percent. Can somebody else do this now?
Was there a title?
Yeah, can I read it from there? Do you want me to read it from here?
It's the GHT you want.
I motion that we use Group Health Trust, our current provider, and proposed benefit changes to maintain a budget eight percent increase, and it changes the definition of preventive care, among some other things that were on that list.
For the two thousand...
For the two thousand nineteen calendar year.
Calendar year.
Am I good now?
No.
Sorry.
That's okay. Mrs. Um...
Teresa. Collins.
Mrs. Teresa.
Did you get that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. It's a little late tonight. Okay, we had a motion and a second on an amendment, um, for the eight percent, uh, rate increase from DHT, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. The amendment carried.
So now we're back to...
All right, so now we're back to...
We have to vote yet. We secondarily have an approval.
And now we will vote on the original resolution, would you please read the original, I mean, the amended resolution, so we all know what we're voting on.
It's very, it's not exactly what you said. It's just be a result of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, approve the health insurance bid from Group Health Trust, um, the eight percent proposal for the twenty nineteen calendar year, as filed with Secretary to the Board of Education. Are you not including the preventative care, because there's a lot of other changes besides that one?
Yeah, right, yeah, it's that one.
Okay.
That's good, thank you.
All right. Would you please call the roll?
Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, I motion, carry.
Now it's official.
No.
Thank you all for coming this evening, and sharing, and those at home who weren't
here but did share, or thought about sharing and didn't have time, um, and I thank all the board members for this, um, thoughtful conversation. Um, I think moving forward, we can lay the groundwork then for working together on figuring out how the, how we can meet that strategic goal of retaining, attracting and retaining quality staff, because that really is key to the, moving the district forward. Are there any individually considered resolutions? Is there a request for any future agenda item? I think everybody's pretty spent tonight. Are there, are there any announcements? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Peschall?
Oh, aye, sorry.